Here is Matt Whiney. Matt, thanks for joining us on Go Big Blue. We appreciate it.
You bet.
Tell us your role with the Tea Party Patriots.
Well, I'm actually connected with the National Tea Party Patriots as a local and state coordinator, and then with the, uh, called the local for this area. And then in our group here in Craig, I'm the Secretary of Treasury.
All right. So you're hosting a school board candidate forum tonight. We appreciate that because we get to hear what they have to say. What are you hoping to hear from the candidates tonight?
Well, uh, of course, being a Tea Party person, our two big questions are mostly what they think about the mill levy coming up, and if they have, if they're not for it, if they have any alternatives, and then for Common Core. But also, we just want to hear from them what their plans are and ideas are for making this a better school board system.
Good. Well, we're looking forward to hearing from the candidates tonight. Matt, thanks for joining us, and we look forward to a fun meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
There is still a few chairs up here, so Craig, come up here as they come in. I'd like to thank you for all coming. Um, we start out with prayer. So Dave DeRose, would you mind leading us to prayer?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that we can come together and question one another and find where we stand. Lord, we pray that you would give us the ability to choose the right candidates and the ability to move forward into the future, to do the things you would have us do in our community. God, we pray that we would turn our hearts from just our own ways and seek your face for your wisdom and your help in making us a great community again. In your name we pray these things, O Lord. Amen.
And then I've asked Ray Betts.
Go ahead, you're on.
I am. Ray, back up here, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. The flag's over here, but behind you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the first thing I'm going to ask, is there any of the CNCC candidates here? I'm going to ask if you guys would come up. We just want to give you one minute to tell us who you are and why you would make a good CNC board candidate, if you don't mind. Then we'll jump into the school board. So if you would, if you don't mind. CNCC, folks. Terry.
Oh, thank you.
We're going to time you, you only have a minute.
Okay. Well, I'll take something less than a minute here. I'm Terry Carwell, former mayor. I take my long tenure in the community, along with involvement in the CNCC Foundation Board for many years, involvement with a lot of other boards and commissions around the community, will provide me with the tools I need to make it successful and a productive board member on the CNCC Board Control. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. applause Zach Allen. I'm employed by the school district, a leadership position there. My passion is educational leadership. So at the board level, I'm able to connect with the higher education at CNCC. I believe that a strong relationship between K-12 and higher education is important for our community. And, uh, I guess that's it. Thanks.
Thanks. applause
I'm Dave DeRose, and I also am a former mayor. This is not what mayors do when they go to die, by the way, even though that's what Terry would have me to believe when we don't know what's going to happen with Ray. Bottom line is, I've been involved in a lot of boards and committees. I've served on the Boys and Girls Club Board. We've expanded into Stevo Springs. I've served on the Ant Valley Bank Board. I've served in a lot of leadership positions. One of the things I think is very important, that we as a college foundation group, understand that there's two campuses, and both those have to flourish to be successful. My experience with the Ant Valley Bank and my experience with the Boys and Girls Club has taught me how to go from the mothership to the branch office, if you will, and from the branch office to the mothership. Both people make a big difference if we take it forward. I'm also right now serving on the board as an appointed official, and would like to stick with you.
Are serving now here. If you would, stand up, ladies. Okay, we'll get rolling here. We have a few rules. We're going to start here to the left with Amy. And each candidate is going to have two minutes to tell us, let me read this so I don't mess it up, have two minutes for an opening statement to introduce themselves and say what in their background qualifies them to be an effective board member. Then we're going to have five questions from us, and we'll go down and give each one to be able to start first. It may not end up, I don't have enough questions, but then, after we're done with our five questions, we're going to allow questions from the audience, and you will ask, we're asking that you ask a specific candidate, or maybe two if you want to, and we'll give them a minute to answer your questions. So, Amy, is my question still good for you?
Sure.
All righty, two minutes, and then we'll just go down the line. Thank you.
Do you have the speakers on here?
Yeah, it should.
They're already on.
Okay, everybody can hear good. First of all, thank you for having us out here to, you know, speak to you, introduce ourselves. My name is Amy Schaefer. I'm an import to the community, and I've been here about six years. I come from a very rural farming, ranching community in central Oregon. Graduated from a high school of 100 kids. It's very similar to the Maybelle experience out east, or out west, and I continued on through higher education, and after that, you know, went on to be an Olympic athlete. I have served as a mentor to the communities that I've lived in in the past. I'm a parent. I have two children in the school district currently. I have a senior in high school, also a preschooler in Eagles Nest. I'm a taxpayer. That's a very important qualification, to know where your money is being spent. I'm a small business owner of a hunting consulting firm, so I travel the world occasionally with clients and, you know, get some additional outside experience from that. You know, and I just, I feel like it's my duty as a, you know, taxpayer, as a parent, as a community member, to serve on the board, to be physically responsible, and to provide the best possible education for our children going forward. And so I appreciate the opportunity to even be a candidate for the community, and I look forward to your support.
Thank you. Amy.
My name's Travis Lunsckum, and I was raised in, right here in Craig, Colorado. I went to school here, graduated here. A lot of you know my father. He taught here for, he was in education for about 28 years. My mother, who's also running, she'll get a chance to talk soon, and she's been in education as well. And I've got two brothers that graduated from Loffin County, and they both went on to be educators. And I've got a cousin, he was a high school teacher at the high school, and his wife, who's also a teacher at the high school. I've got a whole family of educators, you know, and it's, I feel like this is my opportunity to get involved with what I believe to be important, important enough to get involved. I think this is the, these are the, these are our children we're talking about. It doesn't get any more important than that to me, and so I look forward for the opportunity to serve on your board and be a part of the solution. That's all I can.
My name is Darrell Steele. I'm a 73-year-old active-duty cattle rancher. I have lived in Loffin County almost all my life. I was born here, went to school there, graduated from Loffin County High School. I have an associate science degree from Mesa College, a bachelor's science degree from Colorado State University, and I graduated from the Farm Services Law Enforcement Academy in Grand Canyon, Arizona. I guess I've probably served on almost every board in Loffin County in the last 47 years of being back here in the active and in the community. I was a county commissioner for four years. I've been on the hospital board, the fair board, Colorado First Soil Conservation, the planning board. So I have a lot of experience in, in working with boards, working with budgets. My experience as a commissioner in Loffin County, we had to cut the budget in order to survive. And we successfully did that without adversely affecting the bottom line of services that the county provided to the community. I think that my experience there, I ran my own, was CEO and owner of my own mining company for 20 years, and I've owned a ranch for 37. I think this experience on this board would allow me to bring the expertise to help cut the budget and without adversely affecting the education, or we still have quality of education for the students of Loffin County. And I appreciate you guys inviting us here. Thank you very much.
Ben?
I'm JoBeth Tuppa. I live in Loffin County, eight years ago with my husband and two small children that go to school at Sunset. And where I volunteer, and I'm our current PAC president, I have a passion for our school district, and I've spent the last two years steadfastly trying to learn everything that I could about it. My kids go to school here. I want to do good things here, and I just really want to help push this forward and do good things. That's about all I got.
Next one.
First of all, my name, it really is J.N.L. My mother named me that, so it's not a typo, and that's how it's spelled. I've, I've worked at the Hayden School District for 29 years. I've been the finance director there for 18 years, and I worked for the superintendent and the bookkeeper for the other part of my tenure there. I've been involved with school finance that whole time. I've never been, we've never built a budget saying, "We have so much money, how are we going to spend it all?" That never did happen. So we've always had to work to figure out the best way to spend the money that we had with declining enrollment and declining resources. I think that experience would help me serve on this board. I've, I've attended school board meetings the whole 29 years, once a month, so I know, and I've done the minutes for the meetings. I've, I understand what a school member's role is, and feel like I want, I've never had the time to devote to serving on the school board, but I finally feel like I do have that time now. I've been a volunteer advocate for domestic violence in Loffin County for seven years, and I, really, it's fast when you're talking. Yeah. Anyway, I just, I would appreciate the opportunity to serve on the board. I don't have an agenda. I just feel like I want to help. I want to help with the budget. I feel like I, I could do that. So thank you for having us. I appreciate it.
Neil, we did spell your name wrong, and that's our form. Paul, his name is N.E.I.L. Sorry, Neil, but your turn.
That's quite a lot. I'm Neil Folks, wandering elder in this community. I started out in, first associated with the school system in about 1970, when I had three children that went through the Browns Park Country School, when we had about 15 children down there, and they all graduated from there. Then two of the three went through high school here in Craig. And over the many years I've been on, or involved with many of the school boards, and been through four administrators, I can remember, over those long years, seen some of the ups and seen some of the downs. My basic interest is to try to build a strong budget that fits the needs of our children. Some of my background, my active background right now is I'm a board member of the CMEDP and the CCA, ECA, LMD, that and those. Actively a board member of Grant Teachers, was a board member of Partners Incorporated when I was active here. I served as a reading mentor at the Ridgeview, and have been very active and never made a meeting that I know of the board in the last three years.
Thanks, Neil. All right.
Well, I'm Joanne Baxter, and I am a retired Loffin County High School teacher. Right after I retired, I ran for the school board and was elected to two terms, so I served eight term, eight years, not eight terms, eight years, and was term limited. And after four years, you can run again, and since, since there was no one running in my particular district, I thought, well, maybe there's to be another opportunity for me to give back. I do have the experience of being on a board. I have the experience of having taught. I know what the teachers and the students, I know, I know how to work with them. I, I have served on the CNCC Foundation Board. I have served with the Colorado Association of School Boards on their Resolutions Committee, and I still represent them on the State Council for Educator Effectiveness. I, so I think that I have, I have the time to do the job. I have the passion for education, always have had, since I was eight years old and started teaching my sister how to read. Anyway, the point being that I love education. I want what's best for the students. All three of my children were educated here, and all are doing well, and I am very pleased to be, have the opportunity to serve again. Thank you all very much.
Okay, we have five more questions. I'll start, I'm going to read this one and give you a little bit of time to ponder, and then we will start with Travis, but... Oh, thank you. I have a idea here brought up. Sorry. I would like to ask the current school board members who are here to stand up, please. And I'd like to thank you all for coming. My, very much. Shows how they are concerned. Um, anyway, here's number one, and this is a two-part question. I know a minute's, you're going to have to cram in there, but, number one is, two parts. What do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities? How do these roles and responsibilities relate to the superintendent? So what do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities? How do these roles and responsibilities relate to the superintendent? Travis?
Well, I think that our responsibility, our role and responsibility as a school board member is to make this, the education system, you know, all that it can be for our, for our kids, you know, and we have to work together, not just the superintendent, the teachers in this district, the school board members, and the members of this community. If we don't work together to make this education system all that it can be, then it's, it's a lost cause. So I want to work side by side with everyone and make this an efficient, efficient program. Efficient, thank you.
Thanks, Travis. So what do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities? How do these roles and responsibilities relate to the superintendent? Darrell?
The very first, number one role and responsibility of the board is to provide a quality education for the students of Loffin County. In doing that, they have to control the money, the budget that comes in, operate within the, within the financial parameters that are there available, and they are the supervisory board for the superintendent.
Thank you, Darrell. Joanne, Joanne. Should I read it again, or is it clear?
Can you call JoBeth?
No, my JoBeth, sorry.
I'm my grandmother.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The school board is to, please, Mr. Steele, ensure a quality education for the kids, as well as choose the leader whom they are direct supervisors for, for their district, and having a good working relationship amongst themselves, amongst the person that they choose to be the captain of the ship, so that they can all positively work with it.
Thank you, JoBeth. Janelle?
Well, the first, if you look, if you would look on the CASB website, Colorado Association of School Board, it would say, your first job is to hire the superintendent. So that being said, there's a superintendent that we've chosen to lead our district. The school board's role is to make sure that the policies are followed and the operations of the, operation of the school district. So you, they, we need to be involved in making sure that it runs smoothly and that, that we're available to, to check and make sure that things are happening the way they're supposed to, and the superintendent would report to school board members, and so they know what is, is happening with the school district.
Thank you, Janelle. Neil?
All the rules and regulations are already in place. My biggest interest would be to bring all the parties together, teachers, school board, you folks, in behalf of our children, make sure they get the education they are part of, need, real bad work in today's world, and the superintendent is part of that networking system.
Thanks, Neil. Joanne?
I, I think one of the responsibilities, in addition to some that Darrell mentioned and others I've mentioned, is to promote public school education in our community, and to do that in positive, and as positively as we can. We need to pass, plan and pass the budget. We need to act on policy, making sure that that policy is current with state statutes and current thinking. And then, of course, we supervise, evaluate, and determine the superintendent and direct his activities. That's a, and we do not, we do not direct the activities to any other employees. We, that's the only employee that we have jurisdictional, is the superintendent.
Thank you, Joanne. Amy?
Last but not least.
Last but not least.
Everybody has good, good responses, and they are all correct in their own right. As school board members, we are basically your team. The community needs to give us feedback. We need stakeholders' feedback, students, teachers. All the feedback comes to us, and as leaders for the community and school board, we are your advocates for the education of the children. And as they've all said as well, we are the, basically the review board, hiring and firing squad for supervisor, the superintendent.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, on to number two. I'll read it a couple times, and then we'll start with Darrell. Number two, how would you include the parents and community to improve the public schools in our district? How would you include the parents and community to improve the public schools in our district? Darrell?
Anybody that is in an elected office particularly, needs to have feedback from the community In order to do that, you have to be open to people coming to you with their problems, with their concerns, with good ideas, and the, I think the attitude of the particular elected official is what opens that up to people feeling free to come to you with ideas, problems, concerns. And if I'm elected, I would certainly do that. I would have, probably attend some of the PAC meetings and go to places like that where concerns are disengaged.
Thank you, Darrell. JoBeth?
Best way to get the community involved in public education is to educate yourself so that you can help to educate them. I find that just having that information and being able to speak to people on a regular basis is extremely helpful. It's also our job to advocate on behalf of the parents and the students in our district, because that's a lot of times us. And then showing people the proper channels and the proper avenues by which they need to travel in order to, to get the answers that they're looking for and to get to where they're headed, and fixing things. I think just educating, advocating, facilitating.
Thanks, JoBeth. Janelle?
There's, should be committee, or meetings for the district improvement team, that would include parents and the PACs at the building level, and the PAC, PAC teams report to the district improvement team that reports to the, the school board. So there are avenues for each, each parent to become involved. It's, it's hard to get parents to want to serve on those committees. So a board member should serve on the district improvement team, and there should be, of course, they should come to the, the school board and let them know if there are concerns, but the school board member should make sure that that person, if they have concerns, have talked to the principal and follow the chain of command, so that people don't just think they can complain just to the school board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Neil?
It's been a very tough road to hoe to get the community, the businesses, and the parents to attend meetings. You need to get something going that will interest you to come to the council and share your concerns. So about it, we're just guessing what you need and how to go about taking care of it. So we strongly urge that you be involved from top to bottom.
Thanks, Neil. Joanne?
We are currently, another, another role that the board has is to set goals for the, for the district. We're currently working on that with this program that we're involved in called Smarter School Spending. And in, as a result of that, we are identifying stakeholders that can help us with that, with planning the budget, planning where we need to go, and what, what our goals should be. So that's one way that you all can get involved, is to volunteer to be one of those stakeholders. And we're identifying folks as well. I think communication is just critical, and the most critical part of communication is listening. And I, and I will listen. I don't know that I will always be able to fulfill your requests or meet, meet your needs, but I will at least listen, and I will convey those to rest of board.
Thank you, Joanne. Amy?
Well, we all know it's not possible to make every school board meeting or other opportunities, but as you've heard up here, it is important to speak your mind if you have concerns. If nothing else, go to the teacher, go to the principal, speak with the superintendent. It is their role to then report to us and up the chain of command so that we can, you know, listen and make the necessary adjustments or incorporate your ideas into, you know, budget or spending and everything else involved. We as individuals can do nothing personally for a specific concern, but we can certainly bring it to the attention of the person that needs to hear it first, and then work as a team to collaborate on that solution for you.
Thank you, Amy. Travis?
I just simply want to be educated on all the, everything that's going on, and then put myself out there, make myself available to the public, and so that I can be approached and work alongside them. That's all I need to do.
Thank you, Travis. Okay, number three, and I believe we start with JoBeth this time. Do you support Common Core? Yes or no, and would you explain why? Do you support Common Core? Yes or no, and would you explain why? To your answer. JoBeth?
Well, it really depends on matter if I support Common Core or not, but yes, I do. It's the standards by which we're teaching our students today, the majority of the states. I think that people have a misunderstanding of Common Core, and I don't think folks realize that it is merely just the most basic set of guidelines for education, and you can build on that. It's really just, it's right here. That's just where we're trying to get. We can excel further beyond that. So I think that people just, and they don't realize that our children have been being taught Common Core standards for the last five years in our district, so I, I don't think people have a full understanding of it. So I, I don't think people have a full understanding of it.
Thank you, Jo Beth. Janelle?
I have to say I support Common Core. I talked to teachers and, because I really, I don't, I don't know everything. I understand that there's a problem, some people have a problem with it, I don't, so I wondered to understand why. What, what I was told was that, so every, every kid, if they were to start school in Craig and if they went to Missouri, then they would be able to, to pick right up. So every student would be, have an equal chance in, in education field. I don't, I don't think that it takes away local control. I, I think that's something I've heard. The school still has its own curriculum that they follow and they've developed their own curriculum. It has, so it doesn't take away local control. I, I wish I could ask the question to you, what, or why, why people don't like it. That's what I would like to know. I don't understand. I would like to know. Thank you.
Jo Beth, thank you, Janelle.
I think you'll find out if you get elected.
Neil?
Two-thirds against it and one-third for. And that means the one-third for is having a set of standards that all students in 50 states read the basics. Wherever you move with your family, you will know that they'll receive the basics. The way they teach, the books they use, no, I don't support that. I believe it should stay in the community as we're doing right now and the local control.
Thank you, Neil. Joanne?
I support the Common Core state standards. That's the difference between the Common Core curriculum. The state standards were adopted by our state a few years back. We have designed our curriculum around those state standards, but the state of Colorado has directed each school district, can expand upon those standards. They're intended to be minimum standards that every school district should, should have, but we can expand on those and, and we have. I would hope that if the state of Colorado should opt out of the Common Core, that, that action would not affect our curriculum one bit. It has been carefully designed. It has been with a lot of input from teachers and staff and it's, it's a well, well-put-together curriculum. We should keep it to common.
Thanks, Joanne. Amy?
No. I don't, I don't believe, I, you know, I'm sure all of you have seen some of the crazy questions that are on Common Core. It makes me, it does make me kind of very sad that we are moving so much further away from traditional family values, even in a school system setup. But Common Core is here. It has been started teaching already. I think if we can give our teachers a flexibility to use their own personal talents and individual instructions to, you know, allow some creativity with this process, that will be okay. But until things are changed back or we remove ourselves from the collective thought, we'll just have to, to do our own, our own research and find out what works best for our kids and our community.
Thank you, Amy. Travis?
You know, I support the, the Common Core standards. I think that it's important that we have those standards and that, and those are embedded into the curriculum, you know, that's by the state. We don't have any say over that. But the Common Core curriculum, I'm not, I'm not as familiar as I'd like to be with the curriculum itself, but I know that Moffett County School District, they write their own curriculum, you know? So I don't know that the, the Common Core curriculum part of it is, is as relevant to me. I guess I need to be more educated on that specifically.
Thank you, Travis. Daryl?
Well, I guess I'll start off by saying I'm never in favor of the federal government telling us what to do. So for, for federal standards to come down to a local school district and to tell us curriculum is, is not acceptable to me. I do believe that we need a testing program to test our education progress against other districts. And I've been trying to research Common Core pretty hard for the last 10 days since a question came up at Maybell. And I'm having a heck of a time really finding out everything I need to know about Common Core. So if I'm elected, that research will continue.
Thank you, Daryl.
Okay, I think we're done, right? Jo Beth, we started with you on that one? Okay, so we start with Janelle on number four, another two-parter, kind of. Do you support the mill levy increase? And if not, what would be a good alternative? So do you support the mill levy increase? And if not, what would be a good alternative? Janelle?
I guess I would have to say, knowing that school finance and there's not, unless you have more students come into your school district, there's not much of a different, of a way to make money for a school. There's grants and there's, there's student, student growth. So that being said, and I know that the district is struggling financially and I've been involved in four successful mill levy issues in Hayden, I, I guess I have, I support it. I think the school district is the one that has to decide if that's the direction they want to go, but ultimately we live in America and we all get to vote. You might not support it, but you, and you can vote that way. So I guess that's what I.
Thanks, Janelle. Neil?
If we can, as a community, come up with creative ways to keep our budget going live, healthy, then yes, if that's our last alternative to mill levy.
Okay. Thanks, Neil. Joanne?
Well, the school district needs a steady stream of sustainable income and revenue. We need to look and make sure that we have managed the budget well, that we've made all the cuts that we can make that are as far from the students as we can. But I don't know, I, I guess if, I, I would favor a mill levy if we've done that due diligence. And then we'll have to go out and sell it and it's going to be tough. But we need to have some, something that we can rely on. Otherwise, I would, we'll be back here asking you, if we don't pass it, what do you want us to cut? You want us to have 35 kids in a second grade classroom? That doesn't sound very good to me. I wouldn't even want to wish that on a high school classroom level on a second grade one where that's critical. So my, my thinking is that if we've done the due diligence on the budget and that's the, that's where we have to go, then we should do it.
Okay, thanks, Joanne. Amy?
My initial response is no. I'm not a tax and spend person, but I do not know enough about the budget. You know, I need to sit down and do some research and if elected, that's definitely, probably my number one priority is to find out what in the past has continued to push us into the deficit, what could be cut. I mean, there's always ways to trim something without directly affecting the students. But that's definitely top priority for me is to discover what can be done better within our budget without taxing the community further. We're already having problems that we don't need to, you know, put it on the citizens to start with. We need to find it within ourselves and be more responsible as a team.
Thank you, Amy. Travis?
I think it's no secret that the Moffett County School District is in, is in poor shape financially. You know, and I think that as a member of this community, as a taxpayer, as a property owner, I personally have no problem paying a little extra money if it means our children getting a better education. That's where I stand on that.
Thanks, Travis. Daryl?
Let me start off by saying no. I do not favor a mill levy increase. In most, in most government entities, there's levels of bureaucracy, particularly in administrative side, that can be cut without affecting the bottom line, and the bottom line is the education of our children. We don't want to affect that bottom line. But I think, and, and my vast experience as the county commissioner doing this, we had to, we had to do it in Moffett County to survive. If we went in and did it with a scalpel, not an across-the-board deal, and we cut enough out of the budget to balance it, I think that can happen here. If, if I could, if, if they could prove to me that budget can't be balanced the way it is, then I might be willing to look at a mill levy increase, but otherwise, no.
Thank you, Daryl. Jo Beth?
Nope, I don't, I don't support, not currently, I don't. I think that before, and I want to fund education, so that's what y'all should know. But before I would do any of that, I would really assess the places that we are spending our money and trying to figure out why we're having such student loss. Instead of letting our dollars walk out the door, I would think we would be trying to really figure out what is the root of the problem here? Why are people choosing alternative means of education? And the other thing I wouldn't do if we were broke is go out and spend a whole bunch of money on the hope that we might be able to pass a mill levy. So I think it's too bold.
Thank you, Jo Beth. Janelle?
I am starting.
You did, sorry. You don't want to answer the candidates. Okay. The last one here that asked to go first is Neil, because this is our last question. Actually Travis messed this up because I thought he wasn't going to be on Kidding Travis. And he, he thought he had to work and as good he came. He came home from work and came right here. You know he came. So number five, what would be your top three objectives if elected to the school board? So what would be your top, and I'm going to read this three times, give you a little bit to think. What would be your top three objectives if elected to the school board? So Neil, what would be your top three objectives if elected to the school board? Neil?
Work very hard on reducing unfunded mandates that are just swallowing our teachers. Better board communication among themselves and working closely with the community and parents and keeping this a very viable school system.
Thanks, Neil. Joanne?
I would, I, in the first year of my term, I, I think I'd like to see us get out into the community and promote the things that we're doing well. We do amazing things in Moffett County schools and we have some amazing graduates and many of you I know out there personally. And I am proud of what we have done. And I think that that's what we need to do. I like, I like what these young men are doing over here with the Bulldog Trap program that they're promoting. I think that's really important. In addition to that, a couple of areas that I, I think we need to work on is retention and recruitment of our teachers. They are critical to the quality of education in our community. Then another place that I'd like to look at and see what we're doing is in vocational education and providing some instruction or some job-ready skills for those students who may not be pursuing an immediate college program. So those are some things that I think we should look at.
Thank you, Joanne. Amy?
If elected, first of all, I need to dive in, you know, full feet first and, and learn as much as I can about the history of the school board, our policies, what's working, what's not. Speak to the community, speak to our teachers, parents, everyone, and really get involved and, and learn more about the role of the school board as a team. My, probably the top priority of being a team member would be the budget. We can't function without a functioning budget and I don't want to see it going into deficit again continually. And finally, you know, I really want to do something where we increase the ranking of our, of our school district. If we increase that, we retain our best teachers, we will not only, you know, educate our students better, but we'll bring investment to the community, we'll bring, you know, other resources into the community because when you have a high-ranking school, people want to move there and live there and invest in the community. So, you know, what's best for our schools is also best for us.
Thank you, Amy. Travis?
First and foremost for me is I need to get educated. I need to be brought up to speed on all the issues at hand and that's, that's going to be my number one priority. And then second of all, I, I, I want to address this financial situation that we're in. You know, it, it's like I said before, it's no secret that we're, we're in, we're in poor shape financially. We've got to do something. We've got to come together and we've got to, we've got to get this on track. This is our children's education that we're talking about and it just simply just getting more important than that. And then third, I'd say, you know, I, I want to bring the administration, the district employees, us as a school board, and the members of the community together. If we don't work together, it's not going to happen. So my goal is to get us to work together as one.
Thanks, Travis. Daryl?
My number one goal, and I think this is where my area of expertise of coming on board would be to balance the budget. We can't continue to spend more money than we have coming in. It's not a sustainable deal and if the district goes broke, the state steps in and tells us what to do and runs it. My next goal would be to work with the superintendent and the board to try and figure out how to increase the testing scores in relation to the other districts in the state of Colorado. Currently, we're below the state average. I want to work to make sure that we provide a quality education to all the students in Moffett County. And I would like to add a fourth one to this. You asked for three, I would like to add a fourth one. I want to, I want to figure out how to retain the good teachers. We've got too much of a teacher turnover here and a lot of those are really good teachers that are leaving and we need to keep them.
Thanks, Daryl. Jo Beth?
My three are getting our teachers and our students the necessary resources that they need in their classroom so that they can best educate and learn. I would work hard to repair community relations between the district and parents, students, community members in general, and help to re-establish faith in public education because I think it's feeling a little shaky right now. And then the other thing I'd want to do is financial transparency. I think finding out what's going on with our budget and getting to the root of a lot of our issues is just key and it's fundamental to everything as far as getting everyone on the same page and re-establishing trust amongst ourselves with each other.
Thanks, Jo Beth. Janelle?
I think my number one thing is, is the budget also. When it's 80 to 85% go to salaries, it's hard to cut a budget unless it, unless you make it with, have personnel cuts. That being said, I think staff morale is, is very low right now. When we had 40 teachers leave the district last year, I think that we have to get our teachers to retain quality teachers that, and have them want to stay in our district. My third one is, is that we all have to work together to increase student achievement and all students, the vocational students as well as the college bound students. We have to, we have to have programs that, that will affect every, every student.
Okay, thank you, Janelle. Now we're going to go to the audience questions, but I'm going to, I'd like to thank all of you for being here and because I know you're putting your, how do I say, lives out here before us, be ridiculed and whatever's going to happen, but I ask that that not happen here. We will not accept any character defamation. We just want to find out where they stand. We, I expect everybody to be polite and let them answer as they will. So I'm just going to ask you to raise your hands. We're going to, we've asked, we, we're going to try to end at 8:30 and so I don't know how many of them want to hang out afterwards, but raise your hand and ask a question of a certain candidate. And if one of the other candidates says, uh, wait a minute, can I answer that? Can I answer that? We'll try to let you step in. So, but please, please, you got to respect these people for what they're doing, no matter if you agree with their stand or not. So let's please be polite. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Bob, let me bring you this.
I bet I could only be.
Talk loud enough. You can. Go ahead.
Okay, I told Neil that I'd have a question for him, but I think I'll skip down one.
I have a request. Can we have them state their name before they ask the question so we can find out who's asking the question?
To those who don't know, my name is Robert Ruff. I've always known as Bob. And there's an invite to next year, come out to the farmer's market. Well, even if it gets called just local market. Okay, right? All right now.
Okay, what's the question?
The question is, we've... I have learned that really the kids that want to go through and get to college manage to get to college and do good. We even had one that's getting her doctorate and working in the atomic area. And we had a burp. Now, that's taken care of. But I am concerned that recently, we had a group of kids of about six or eight that ended up top in the state because possibly by luck. But they got... They beat everybody in the state in picking stocks. Now, if there's one... I would like to ask... And then this program was done away with. I am very concerned that our young men and our young women coming up do not know how to handle their savings. They're getting shoved into these 401Ks. They're getting shoved into this type of stuff. And they just turn it over.
Bob, you only have a minute.
So that's you. That's the question. Thank you. So the question is to you, Joanne. Is there any possibility that we could have a course in the younger high school? That is, what, 10th, 9th grade? That could really go into this, in this area of business? I brought it up earlier. And Neil, that's what I wanted, was thought I'd push you on, but that's it.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Bob.
I don't know what the current curriculum is, and there's probably people in the room who could tell me, but at least when I was teaching, we did teach a class on consumer economics, and it was required for every student to take. And we did talk about savings and how to buy a house and all of those things that you need to know to be a good consumer in our society, and to save and those things. And we spent a lot of... They had to take it. It was a semester course. I'm not sure that that's still being taught, but if not, I know that there are programs at the high school that are teaching those things. As you said, we have a team that went to state and did very well. So I do believe that we need to do that. But you know what? One of the things I learned about 16- and 17-year-olds? You can teach them, and they can forget about it the minute they walk out the door. Some of them remember, and you can do the very best job you know how, but it's still hard to, for them to retain that.
Okay. Next question? Amy?
Holler it, or you want to- I don't need that. Dave DeRose, 924 Barkley Street. In your district, Tony. Quick question. I think one of the biggest issues facing our school district is not the budget. It's not teacher retention, but it's single parents in our community and children from non-traditional homes. The norm today is not a child that has his mother and father or her mother and father both living in the same home. I don't know who to point this to. I might start with Darryl, but one of you please address, what do you think the school board and administration can do, and our school system can do, to create that student involvement where they are ready to learn, and they don't interrupt the classroom?
Well, to start off with, I don't think the school board probably can do a heck of a lot about single-family homes. However, we may be able to engage the students. I know when I went to school, the number-one thing that the teacher needed to do with me was to get me wanting to learn. It wasn't as much what they taught me. It was getting me to want to learn. And once I got there, then I was old. And if we can do things to get the kids to want to learn, that's a first big step forward to education.
Thank you, Darryl.
Good enough, Dave?
No, not really.
Not really?
That was a loaded question. And why it was a loaded question was, we talk about budget, we talk about teacher retention, we talk about how well our students are doing, but we never put any assessment into how difficult it is to create a classroom atmosphere for learning because of those issues. That was a loaded question. I wanted to see how you handled it. And I wasn't trying to get after Darryl by any means.
Did I do okay?
You did all right. My experience at the Boys and Girls Club has shown we've got a lot of kids that are really, really outside of the box of normalcy. And somehow or another, our community, not just you as school board members and not just our teachers, but our community has to reach out to those kids. I don't care if we coach them at Dunk Walker Football. I don't care what we do, but we've got to reach those kids. And if we don't, we cannot be successful.
May I respond a little bit to that?
Sure.
I worked 11 years as a counselor at the jail in Greiford. And I've seen many, a youngster that self-view the cracks. Lack of good parental relationships. If a parent is not involved in teaching and pushing the child at times, they're gonna fall out. It's not a pretty picture.
Okay. Another question? Ray?
Thanks, Matt. I just want to thank all you guys for stepping up and putting yourself out there, and I applaud that. One of the questions I have for you is, you know, oftentimes when people want to be elected office, they think they know how much time commitment is involved. And I can just about guess, looking at what we have up there, there are probably three or four of you that really understand that. But do you really understand the time commitment? And have you talked to the president's board members and asked them, "What kind of time commitment am I gonna be addressed with?" Because oftentimes, you get elected to office, and you're sitting there saying, "Well, they didn't tell me I had to go to these kinds of meetings," or "Oh, that many meetings," or "Be involved in this or be involved in that." And it's just an open question to anybody that would like to answer it. Thanks.
Tony, would you answer that for me?
I'll let you answer.
Tony's been my mentor, and I've spent many hours visiting with him on these questions and also superintendent. And I'm almost a student, if you don't think. I mentor very frequently, and Janelle as well. Yes, there's gotta be a lot of time put in to serve in this community.
Anybody else from the panel?
You know, I think all of us up here can comprehend that it is gonna take a lot of time. It's gonna take a lot of time in meetings, and it's gonna take a lot of time of our own research, on our own time. I don't think any of us would be here if we didn't weren't ready to put forth all effort towards the betterment of our kids. And I can honestly say for myself, I am very busy. I'm a mother of two. I run my own business. But you know what? I also know that when you want something done, you give it to a busy person, and they'll get done.
Thanks, Amy. Another question from the audience? Tony, you work the mic here.
I don't think I need it either. You know? Tony St. John, I am term limited. I'll be out this November as a school board member. And I gotta tell you, when you get close to leaving, it's heartwarming of all the work that you try to do with your fellow councilpeople and how hard you try to work together. And the fact that you agree to disagree is great, and the things that you have to do. And as it's getting closer, it's really been hitting me about a term that I heard, exit interview. Okay, whoever wants to answer. But how important... We've talked about how we're losing kids to different areas, homeschooling, whatever. How important is it to you to retain those children in the classroom, to have the parents be concerned and happy what's going on in the classroom? And how would you use and work that exit interview to benefit the school? Whoever would like to answer.
I'm going. As somebody who got my friends really involved in this school a couple of years ago, I mean, I don't want to see any more children leave. My son lost three friends out of his class, and they're homeschooled. They're in bags now. I want everybody to stay. It can be better, but we're not listening to what the staff... We're not hearing what they're saying to us. Blanket terms, misrepresentation. I think people would stop eating if they felt that they had a voice, if they felt that when they said they need resources, that it wasn't being locked in there with the same resource that another group is looking for, something specific. I think really listening to what people are saying, taking it in, and trying to find a way to make it work, that's gonna be what fixes a lot of these issues. We have to hear what they're saying, because we're not getting it.
Can I take a crack at that, too?
Sure.
I think exit interviews are an excellent tool. You can do exit interviews on the kids that are leaving, that are going to homeschool, and come up with some really good ideas, maybe of what you need to do different to hold those kids in. Not only on the kids, I think we should be doing exit interviews on our teachers that leave, too. I think that would be a valuable tool in trying to retain our teachers, our good teachers, and going forward with our district.
Thank you, Darryl.
Any other candidates want to answer? Or we'll go to another audience question, if we have any more. Well?
Yes, John. Just to kind of tag in with what Dave was saying. Youth services in Monta County is dealing with a client load now that's outrageous. We have, I think, 38 kids that we're trying to keep out of the judicial system as best we can. And it started about a year ago, maybe a little more than a year ago. So just as potential school board members know that something's going on in the community, and kids are getting pulled into the judicial system through behavior problems. And it's-
Sorry, he's around that corner. It's cutting it out.
It's a community-wide problem, and the school board's gonna be part of the solution.
Any comments?
When I was teaching, I spent half of my time as a dean for a class of students. And we started out with them as freshmen, and we followed them through till they were seniors. And I know perfectly well what your concerns are, and I've dealt with students who were in the judicial system. And we do have to recognize that we have students that have needs beyond what we can address, beyond what we as teachers and as a school can handle. And so when we talk about Boys and Girls Club, and I like the fact that we have some youth services going on, it's a community problem. And I hate to rely on a cliche, but it takes a village, folks, to get these kids, all of them, where they need to be.
Thank you, Joanne. Any other questions?
Dave Haskins. I'd just like to say, I heard it mentioned that a member or dude didn't know enough about Common Core. We do have some material, and we have lots of sources on Common Core if you need more information. Thank you. We'd like to thank you all for stepping out, stepping up. That's what makes America right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else have a question?
Okay, I'd like to ask this of every candidate. I'm looking for a very short answer. If you can't do it, yes or no. Just try and be very brief. As a general concept, would you support the concealed carry of handguns in some form in Monta County schools and on school property?
No.
No.
Me. We'll just go around.
Yes.
I'm gonna say yes, but I'm gonna add just a little bit to it. Not concealed handguns for students, but concealed handguns-
No, but I want to add something, too. I think that if you were, if a shooter were to come to our school, I bet you anything there are some kids out there with a gun in their pickup that they would protect the school.
Does that mean a male?
No, I think it's still happening.
Did we go clear our acts?
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dale Zimmerman, and I would like to ask y'all just a yes or no if you support an extended school calendar?
Start with Amy.
Oh, starting with me?
Yes.
Um, I'd have to explore, you know, where it's working and where it's not. Personally, for this community, I would say no. There's too much going on in the summertime, too many excellent programs that kids would miss out on or compromise in order to have a full-year school calendar.
I guess I would like to know what all that entails before I could give that an educated, you know, answer. So to me, I think that there's probably some benefits to an extended calendar, but I don't know. I guess I would have to be more educated on that before I can answer.
I would say no. This is a rural community, and a lot of rural people have other things they do in the summer. There are other activities, sports, camps, all these kind of things that happen during the summer. So no, I wouldn't support that.
I've seen two proposed calendars for next year, and I don't think that a longer still here. It's not, but the way it looks right now, I don't think it's gonna work, and people aren't gonna go for it, I mean. But we have a short season here. We're in a ranching community. The whole reason we had summer was so that kids could help their parents hay and move cows and do whatever else they need to do on a ranch, and want to on a ranch. But no, I think that we have enough time right now. That'd be a good option.
I would say yes. I would support an extended calendar. I think if you talk to any teacher, they would say, "I don't have enough time. I always have to test kids. There's not enough time to prepare kids for testing." Teachers want more time with kids. I think we have to support what the teachers want. So yes.
Yes and no. And I know that's not what you want to hear, but I do think that there are some children in that we need to investigate, and I would like to see us investigate costs, et cetera, for having summer school for some kids who either desire it or who need it for medical purposes. But I don't think that I would support a extended year calendar for all of our students. That would be difficult, I think, for some of our teachers as well. So I don't think I could for everyone. But we need to investigate doing some programs.
Splendorly, Owen. No, I'm not using the mic. My question pertains to the last one. I actually didn't have one at all. It seems because of Common Core and other issues that are coming up, the teachers are teaching too much to the test. But I do know that there is now a movement afoot to start advocating and pushing the government that's requiring all these tests to back off. Are you supporting and going to advocate for backing off of the tests and allowing the teachers to teach, to learn, and not- the teachers to teach, to learn, and not teach the test?
Start with Travis.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that is, that is something out there. I, teaching, there is, there's a lot of testing, there's a lot of emphasis on testing, and, you know, not everyone tests well. I know I certainly didn't, but, I don't know. That's, that's a tough question. That's all I got, I'll pass it on to the next one.
There, I, I would support backing off the testing. I've been talking to quite a few of the teachers in the district, and they say we're testing at least twice as much as we should be. However, I, I wanna qualify that a little bit. I think we do need to have testing to, so that we can show where our kids are in relation to other districts. We could be sitting here teaching and go along thinking we're really doing good, and maybe we aren't. Most of the teachers I talked to also said they wanted to be able to qualify where they were at against other districts, to make sure they were providing the quality education.
I agree with what Darrell here is saying about assessment. I think we do test our kids too much, but we need to give our teachers, work with them to find a good assessment tool, so that they can see where they're at, and make sure that they're getting the students to where they need to be in a real-time sort of format, so that we're not doing something like with Hartwell, we still don't even have the results or they're just not trickling in. So, having something tangible that would help them do what they need to do right now. But, it's, it's a catch-22, because the teachers are also sort of slaves to the test because of SB 191, I mean, they have to do well on testing, or it could mean their job. You can be a 20-year teacher who's no longer on probation, you test three years badly, and if they put you back on probation, then you can lose your job, I mean. So, really, it's, and it all ties into funding, it's, it's a slippery slope.
I do believe there should be a limit on, on testing. I also think that our teachers are the experts in the field, and they would be the ones to figure out what tests that they should, should have and don't need, and absolutely have too much testing.
Yes, I support the idea of backing off, creating tests locally that works, and get rid of the unfunded mandates describing all this.
I believe that we test too much, and we put too much reliance on those test scores, and put too much pressure on our teachers and staff to make those tests work. And I would like to, I, I agree that we also need to have some kind of standardized test, that we measure ourselves against other schools, and that we can show you all that we are achieving, and that we are advancing. So, there's not to be a happier medium in there someplace. And I'm not sure exactly where that is, but I'm certainly willing to, to work on it.
Yes, I, I do agree as well. It's, it's extreme amount of testing, extreme amount of busy work for our teachers. I think the, the overall education of the kids is getting lost in the test. I should remember being tested almost every month, growing up as a kid. I think it's gonna take a lot of research on all of our parts, as a school board and district, to come up with the best means possible to meet requirements for, you know, try the minimal state testing and ranking, but still giving our teachers a flexibility to do their jobs, and motivate and inspire, not make fear about a test.
Hello, Dave.
Pipe this up, Amy.
I'm gonna, I'm, we're gonna go and give these folks two minutes to give a closing statement, but I'd like to give you an idea that we try to kick around at the Tea Party. We want, as the people of America, elected officials, and expect them to fix everything. You know, our country wasn't based that way? They're just giving one vote for whoever we vote for, it's our job to fix things. And I'd like to thank you all for being here, but please stay involved, no matter who we elect, no matter who we have elected, we got Mayor Ray Beck, we've got Commissioner John, we've got people on every board, it's our job! Hi, Bray, Bray Moe. It's our job to help fix things, not theirs. We elect them to put a voice where it needs, they're not gonna fix our state or our federal government, you know that? Even John can't do it, ask him all by himself or Frank. It just doesn't work, we need to stay involved. So before I give them two minutes, and we'll start with Joanne, so if we give you two minutes for a closing statement, and then if you wanna hang around and ask them personal questions, go ahead, but we'll just give them the two minutes, and then we're pretty much done. But please, please, stay involved. Our country's in trouble, our county's in trouble, our city's in trouble. If we don't help out, it don't get fixed, 'cause it's not their job. Thanks.
I guess my closing remarks would include a thank you to all of you who came out and to listen to us give, give our ideas. And I hope that you all will be willing to let us know what additional ideas you have. Like I said earlier, I promise to listen, I'm not gonna promise to fix it, because I, I'm one of seven on that board, so I can't, I can't fix personally what I think maybe ought to be fixed, or what you may think. But at least we have to communicate with one another, listen to one another, and find out what it is, and what direction we want our schools to go in the next, in the next few years. So I thank you again, everyone, for coming, and thank the Bearsers Patriots for sponsoring this.
Amy?
I also would like to thank you all for having us out here. It's been a pleasure for me to be part of the candidate process, and get out more in the community, and join some of the forums, and go to more of the school board meetings. And, you know, I just, it, it's an honor to be able to sit up here with so many caring individuals, and to see all of you out there as caring individuals, and I think it's awesome that there's four of us running for one district seat. That says something that obviously we all, we're all concerned, and we all wanna play a part in, in our future of our kids. And, you know, I just wanna say, as a team, we can do this. Together, everyone achieves more, on a local level and on a governmental level. It's all of our responsibilities for our kids, they are our future, and I would appreciate your supporting vote on moving forward.
Thanks, Amy.
I too would like this opportunity to thank all you guys for being here, and giving me the opportunity, and us the opportunity, to share our, our parts and our beliefs. But I'm gonna reiterate what I said at the beginning, man, I'm here, I'm here for the kids, I believe that this is important, this is our children we're talking about, it doesn't get any more important than that. So, I hope that I can be a part of this process, I hope I can be a part of the solution, and I, I have no doubt that it's gonna be a very time-consuming deal, but I'm here because I believe in this community, and I believe in our children, and I wanna be, I wanna be a part of the solution. Thank you.
Darrell?
It's getting me repeated quite a few times, but thanks for being here. I think that one of, one of the things that I hope that voters and taxpayers and everybody know, you were talking about, we can't fix everything just because we're elected. If I'm elected on this board, I'm one person on a seven-person board. Statutorily, we don't have a whole heck of a lot that we can do, and, and it's probably good. We supervise the superintendent. We don't micromanage into the school system and go down there and mix our finger in this, because it would not be good for the education of our children. We need to allow the professional educators to do their job. But we, as a board, supervise the superintendent, we approve the budget, we approve the policies, and try and make sure that it all fits into the parameter of those policies. I have a lot of experience working on boards, trying to bring boards together to come to a common goal, and I, I think I have an expertise at that, and I would certainly appreciate your vote. But if you're not gonna vote for me, please fill out the ballot and vote anyway.
Thanks, Gilbert.
Well, thank you all for selecting, remember you're all looking at me. When I took my bat to you, it's much easier. I'm really passionate about the students here in Monza County. I want to do great things for my students, my children, your children, grandchildren, whatever. I think that we have so much potential, and I just want to bring us back to the greatness that we were once at, and the positive atmosphere, and just all the excitement that surrounded the Monza County School District in years past. And I don't think that it's terribly difficult to get back there, but it's going to take work. And, difficult choices, but that's, you know, that's what we've gotta do, and I just really want to do my part in my community to help move this all forward, so, thank you all again.
Thanks, Gilbert. Dino?
She could be a cheerleader.
Was she?
I, I just, I appreciate the opportunity to come here today too, and, and just know that I, I feel, I feel strongly about this community also. And bottom line, we're all here for the students. I feel like there's a lot of great things happening in this district. I don't feel like it's, it's, it's a bad place at all right now, I just, I wanna be there to help it, make it better. And as a board member, my job would be to set policies and, and do, and fix the budget, but it's, like Mr., like Darrell said, it's not to micromanage the schools and, and the teachers and, and the people that work there. I just, I just wanna help in any way that I can, and I feel like I have the time to devote to that in my life now. My, my children went to school here in this community, and now I have grandchildren going to school. And, and the only reason I'm serving on, that I would wanna serve on the board is to, to help.
Thanks, Dino. Neil?
I wanna thank Steve Martin for everything you've been doing in this community, hard work you put forth, and all of you folks for being out here. You just got to remember to set our individualism aside, we are a community, we must learn to work together to solve our common problems. We are creating human beings, a luxury source, and building community. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Okay, I'd like, everybody that's an elected official, would you raise your hands? I know I didn't mention everybody. Thank these folks for being here, because the committee of the Red Sox... Again, a big round of applause for these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.